Everybody, it is Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, it's seven o'clock. This is meeting on the Lee School, in the Lee Middleland High School Library. We are continuing to be in a virtual meeting. Or suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A. Section twenty, this meeting will take place in a hybrid fashion, both virtually via Zoom or in person for those committee members and attendees choosing to access in either. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Pursue it to Mass General Law, chapter thirty A, section twenty, I'm hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. And to all join up with it. Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission statement of Lee Public Schools is to ensure students have the opportunities to develop social, civil, and critical thinking skills to thrive in an ever-changing world.
Mr. Robin.
Here.
Ms. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Kishar.
Yeah.
Mr. Langloch.
Yeah.
Ms. Larmen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
All right, next up, we have the approval of the June eleventh, no, yep, June eleventh and July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, state made. Entertainment.
I'm going to motion to approve. Um, June eleventh and July twenty-ninth, we school. Second.
Any discussion? Friend.
Mr. Robin.
Same.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Kishar.
Yes.
Mr. Langloch.
Yes.
Ms. Larmen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
All right, and next up, we have published input.
Great, residents of Lee are invited to address the committee regarding items on this evening's agenda at this time. Issues raised will normally be referred to the administration or subcommittee of the school.
Oh, yes. Welcome, for anybody who doesn't know me, and I cannot see that part because he was on Zoom. I'm Michelle Polari, I am a parent, I am a fifth grade teacher, I am a department adherer, I am the mentoring coordinator, and I am the LE vice president. To throw that out there, because I want you to know why I'm here, I'm here tonight as a fifth grade teacher and a member of the principal search committee for the elementary school. First, aside from that, I would like to thank Jeff and his staff for the amazing work that they have done. I've been in my classroom, I've been in the building, I've been around all summer doing summer school, and it looks fantastic. The communication from your team to us about when we can access classrooms is so appreciated, so thank you for, to your staff for all of that. On the second, I wanted to come and talk a little bit, I know Kirk and Jen and Mike. And Nicole, um, being on the principal search committee, thank you to all of you for that, I feel like we are trying to do our due diligence. In replacing Tim who's leaving, and so one, the reason I'm here is. We're getting to that place, we're not finished with that process, but we are getting to the end, and I just wanted to share some kind of out-of-the-box thinking from the committee, if that's okay, in terms of. If we don't find someone for the start of school, what could possibly be the best case scenario? Just to be clear, I was open and honest with Tim and Mike about this, so I'm not coming in blindsiding anyone. Which is to present to, to all of you the possibility of Mike putting on one more hat like the rest of us and possibly filling in that role. I will say my reasons and kind of, um, some support of why that might work, not be perfect. But why it might work for us should be maybe in your interest in that, but I just wanted to put that out there. I, like I said, I really appreciate everybody's work on that and really trying to brainstorm and think. What is best for the kids and families and, you know, the community here for what we can do, so, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, yeah. Okay. Anybody else on our screen?
No.
Okay. All right, next up, we have a superintendent update.
Okay. So, uh, as always, I will try to be efficient with the committee's time. Uh, first thing is important, it's kindergarten enrollment, we are up to thirty-one, so that is an improvement, mild. But improvement, uh, nonetheless, that's as of today, seven of those thirty-one students are school choice, so about a quarter. Uh, of our kindergarten class are coming to us from districts other than the town of Lee in Peeringham. Uh, we're presenting or proposing this year to have two sections of students, one will have fifteen, one will have sixteen students, assuming that those numbers remain the same. We did, and we will have a vacancy, we will have an empty faculty position by virtue of that. Uh, but we are going to hold that position in the event that we may get some influx in the next week. Uh, or that numbers may grow and we may need to make some division of classes later down the road. Um, that being said, we, we are being very mindful of what the census data are telling us. Uh, looking forward, and I think we as a, uh, as a school administration team and as a school committee. Uh, need to continue to think outside the box and whether that means contemplating adding another, um. Pre-kindergarten, uh, classroom, uh, with the hopes of attracting some families that might be going to, uh, private, um. Private schools or private day, uh, daycares or other, uh, pretty good pre-kindergarten options to try to bring them into Lee, show them what quality education. Uh, they can receive from us at a very early age and then sticking with us, uh, that's something we need to look forward to, uh, look at moving forward, excuse me, so. Uh, so right now, two kindergarten teachers, uh, two kindergarten classes, one will have fifteen, uh, one will have sixteen. Um, the day of AI, uh, so when, uh, former commissioner Jeff Riley, uh, left his, his, uh, his post. He joined a nonprofit organization, uh, that, uh, is collaborating with MIT. On how, how AI will, will influence the future of education, including, uh, policies that will drive. Uh, what we do as educators, uh, and really, uh, to protect our industry so that we aren't replaced, uh, by a computer. Uh, I met with, uh, Jeff yesterday, uh, and Jeff has opened up an opportunity for fifteen districts in McComwell. Uh, to join in the first cohort of, um, learning and partnering with MIT. Uh, he is welcoming Lee into that, uh, first cohort, I think it's a tremendous opportunity for us to join on. Uh, I'll admit, I don't know a ton about AI. Uh, not in practice anyway, in theory, I think I know a lot, I, I think I know a lot. Uh, but I'd like to learn more, and I'm, I'm pretty confident that we probably got a lot of teachers who would like to learn more. Uh, so that they, at some point, um, or maybe we as a district, uh, can get ahead of what our students know. This is, I think, an important challenge for us to know as much, if not more, than our students do, so that we can, uh, keep up with them and lead them. Uh, in the journey that, that, uh, and that AI, uh, will take us forward in, so I will keep the committee. Uh, and the community updated on, on what that looks like, and I will be looking for educators, uh, who are interested in this. They don't have to be experts, they don't have to be computer science teachers, they simply have to be interested educators who want to learn more, uh, about AI, and I'll keep everybody posted. The LES playground, you all know that this has been a, uh, a, a hot, uh, topic for us this, this summer, but it's good work, it's good work, and, and I'm sure Jeff will talk more about it during this report. But I just wanted to share, you know, a couple of photos, I want to thank LB for their work, and I know, you know, this, this work didn't get done as early in the summer as we had, maybe hoped and expected. But it's getting done nonetheless, it will be, the work will be, in the supermajority complete before students enter our buildings. Uh, on the twenty-sixth, uh, top coat, uh, will be, uh, work finished this week, there had to be some additional grading done. Uh, to make sure that the water was indeed running away from the building, uh, so, and again, I'm sure Jeff will talk more about it, but you'll see the work that was done. Lots of area, uh, has been repaved, that image all the way on your right is simply just showing you, uh, one of the, um. What do we, what do we call that, Jeff?
The basis.
The basis for the basketball hoops, uh, so those are installed and they'll be ready to go, and as soon as that top layer is finished, then the hoops will be installed. Uh, it really does look good, uh, and we're, we're happy, um, we're happy with the work, and I appreciate. Uh, the conversations that happened between community members who have been involved, especially those in the PTO. Um, to make sure that we get this project right. Uh, we will be ordering, uh, both a US map and a world map, uh, to be spenciled on that pavement. Uh, so that, um, we can create the, the best learning opportunities, uh, for our students, that will complement. Uh, other, uh, sort of pavement games, uh, hopscotch, foursquare, other things that can, um, be utilized by our students. A, a question that came up, and I just want to, uh, point this out, in this picture here on the left, uh, you'll see where the pavement stops. Uh, it stops where the classrooms begin, and the reason for that is, is, is twofold, one is, we didn't want kids playing on hardtop right in front of classrooms as a distraction to those. Uh, to those classrooms, and two, the concern had always been about the grass and the condition of this area here just became a mud pit. Uh, this grass that's, that's been left is in, is in good condition, it, it's, it's well-maintained. Or as well-maintained as it can be, and it didn't need to be torn up and replaced with asphalt, so, so that's why the, uh, the termination was made there. And the order of that was in, in, uh, order of importance wasn't what I said to you was. We don't need kids playing in front of kids who are trying to be educated, uh, in those classrooms. Uh, van update, um, we have a VIN number for the second van, that's great news. Uh, what that means is we should expect to see that second vehicle, uh, sometime, uh, late winter, early fall, or, or, late winter, early spring. Maybe a wee late spring, I don't know, but either way, the good news is, uh, that vehicle, uh, is going to be manufactured for us, so we're very, very happy about that. And some important information, uh, for you, uh, I know that you've got a reminder invite from Brenda recently about convocation, I would love it. As many of you are, that are available can attend, on the twenty-first, it's gonna be a really, uh, I think, powerful morning. Um, it, it'll, brief remarks from me, uh, but, uh, acting commissioner Russell Johnson will be delivering, uh, remarks. And, uh, Ron Suck's going to lose an award, winning Pulitzer Prize, uh, winning, um, journalist. Uh, author, uh, and, and parent of, of an autistic child who's got a tremendous story. Uh, will be the keynote speaker, it's gonna be really, really great. So we've got three days of PD, the twenty-first to twenty-third, mandated training has started, and information went out to staff, lots are completing it, and I, for the. For maybe over the second time ever, the one was the gift of the Yetis a couple of years ago, uh, the second is this, say, people are like, thank God, this training is better than what it's been. Uh, for the past, uh, few years, so we're happy about that. And during the first week of school, we know the first two days are half-days for students, full days for staff, we do have PD for them, Labor Day weekend is a four-day weekend, and. Lastly, um, dean and principal search updates, um, I'll take them in order, we hired a dean, uh, last week, I signed. Uh, Lawrence Carrier, uh, as the dean of LES, I think that, um. Mister Carrier is going to be a tremendous asset, uh, to Lee Elementary School, uh, I was, uh, completely, um. Impressed, uh, with what he brings to the table, and I think what he'll be able to do, uh, for the climate and the culture, uh, at Lee Elementary School, and, um. I called it a failed search because to date, we've interviewed a number of candidates, uh, for the principal's position, none of whom have met. Uh, the expectations, uh, of the screening committee or me, um. So we posted as an interim position, we did recently receive an application from an individual, we are going to try, uh, based their last grasp. Uh, to see if we can get the screening committee together to interview the flat candidate, uh, to see whether they, uh, meet our expectations and, and can join. Uh, our team and will be a good fit, uh, on an interim basis, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna be clear that that's what it remains, because, um. At this stage, I think, uh, it's in the school's best interest, we can give that person, if, if, should they be selected. Give that person a year-long job interview to see if they're the right fit, uh, for the school, and if there's not, uh, we go back out for a search for a permanent. In the meantime, um, and to, uh, I guess to complement what, uh, what Michelle mentioned earlier. Uh, we do have, uh, a backup plan, which is that, uh, Principal Merton, uh, is a true team player and has. Has said that he'll do whatever, uh, is needed or asked of him, uh, for the district. Uh, so that is something that the committee and, and I need to, um. Need to consider, uh, to, if it's okay, if I go out a little bit about this to, to Michelle's. Uh, point about, about me, I will tell you that I did proactively reach out to the ethics commission at the state. Uh, they indicated that there, that, that it would not be a conflict of interest, uh, Russell Dupere, uh, reached out to Desi. Uh, but I have not heard back from him as to whether there's concern, however, he did indicate to me. Uh, that he is aware of other districts where the superintendent also serves as principal. I, I, I have to be very honest, right, this isn't, this isn't the ideal, uh, but it may be a workable solution, it may be a workable solution. Uh, not one that I'm going to sit here and say, please, please, please go that way, uh, in any way, shape, or form. I do think it's important, however we work it out, uh, that, uh, we keep the students' interests in mind first. Um, the, this is truly a student's first. I, I, I firmly believe in the faculty and staff at LES, that they are, uh, they're adaptable, adjustable, they will, they will, uh, be flexible, and they will bend over backwards for kids. But we need to make sure that we keep, uh, the best interests of students in mind first, however we choose to move forward. I think that's my last slide. Yeah. I'll stop there.
Okay. I'm gonna, I have things I want to ask first, um, the first one was about the, uh. Third kindergarten teacher that you, so is that position completely empty or we're holding on to that?
We're holding, we're holding out of the position, we're not, we're not toasting it.
Okay, so there's nobody in the position.
That is correct.
The only reason I'm asking is I thought, oh, that would be, you thought the same thing. Um, the second thing is, I'm gonna say it to you, but it's to everybody, can we just make sure whatever paint we use to paint the world map is not slippery paint? Because that was the problem last time, we had, right? We had, we had two kids break bones and somebody cracked their head and it was just not good.
We did Jeff's, uh.
You did some test runs.
Yeah, what big research and what basic guess. My car hardly.
Okay, great. And then my third thing is, I think it would be helpful for the families and the kids to have a decision about what you're doing about the elementary principal before school starts.
Yeah.
You know, like, I think, like, you know, it's gonna be Tim, it's gonna be Tim, if it's gonna be you, it's gonna be you, or if it's gonna be this person who would have to be in for many ways because they're not certified, so they'd be able to get their hours in, you know, this year, but. It, it, that decision needs, because I think that's gonna make. Families feel better if they know that there's somebody in the position. Somebody's riding that wall.
So, part of the reason why, uh, I brought it up, uh. Tonight during my report, and I think part of the reason why Mister Nichols asked for it to be on the agenda was that if, uh. Then while it's not the committee's decision about principal. If I'm involved in any way, shape, or form, it will require, uh, a Union Twenty-Nine meeting to happen, uh, real fast, um, so. I, I, I welcome the conversation, I, I think that the input, and I appreciate Michelle, uh, sharing her thoughts, but I think the input of everybody who sits at this table. Uh, I, I would love to hear, uh, because I think it, it is a very difficult position for all of us right now, and again, I want to do what's right for kids, but I'm not. I feel awful saying this, but I'm not, I don't feel like I'm in a position to tell the committee I've got an ideal situation to present to you.
Right.
Or the solution, so I would love for this to be a little bit, if we could, problem-solving, uh. Discussion.
If, if Tim took, went with principal, that leaves a fifth grade, okay?
Which we have posted, which we have posted as an anticipated opening, we, we, we are, as an interim, anticipated interim position. Okay, because my assurance to Tim, when Tim gave me my res, his resignation, was that I was placing Tim in the fifth grade position. Assuming that we would find a principal to fill that position, so. The reason it's anticipated interim is, is that's a one-year, that's a one-year placement, we hope that by the end, if not sooner, that by the end of the year, Tim would go into that, uh, fifth grade position.
The difficulty of that, of course, and I've been in that role because, um. Jack had you for half the year and you went off and did something. Not, I, I don't know, not something, but like, I think I'm sort of eighty or something, um, so I think that's hard on kids, and, you know, Jack had the same thing with Michelle. Jack seemed to hit every grade with every person that was having children, and so I think that's really hard for students to go from. I spent two or three months learning this person's, um, expectations and, um, criteria and what they accept and don't accept, and then to have somebody else come in and. Them have to, like, retrain, especially as that's a important M. cashier.
And I don't want to, I, I don't want to, uh, I, I would be negligent if I didn't share, um. There, there's a sort of a third option also that could potentially look like Greg, uh, acting as principal, um. In, in both buildings, it can only be one place at one time, but between the two of us, uh, we can. Uh, we can, we can cover, cover, make things work, nothing here is ideal, this is not a position. Uh, that any of us want to be in, but I think again, uh, thank you, Heidi, for the question, I think for everybody, it's good to ask as many questions as we can, just to help. To find the best solution.
Cause my, my, not just hearing more like a statement that consistency has always been a big deal for kids, especially in school, consistency. And be nice if we find either hire a person in or some ask to take place for consistency. Because I hate to see something goes on and you have another change, and usually sometimes change on certain kids is very hard. And it takes, maybe it take a while for them to use this change. I just, to me, is if we can find someone sooner than later, or find someone that we know that we can put into that role. That can be consistent and, and for the year. Then go that route, because then again, you're not dealing with such change or reparation with certain students.
I don't disagree.
I'll promise it.
Which is why, this, you know, I, I, I don't know, uh, I will. I don't, I don't know, uh, that the person comes from, uh, from, from New York State, um. They have applied for their initial, uh, admin license in Massachusetts, they, they held administration positions in New York State, um. Yeah.
Is that, is that what it would be?
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta interview that kid first. I, I think my, my opinion here, first of all, Tim, love a beer, it's great look, I really, it's great. Uh, Tim, I appreciate your time as principal, um, as a committee member, uh, as a parent, uh, same across conference tables with you. Uh, I really appreciate what you've done, uh, for the building and for the kids, it, great job, I'm, I'm very happy. Uh, in that same thing, I'm happy for you to go into fifth grade and get back to classroom, if that's what you want to do, I'm very happy for you to be back in the classroom. Consistency, I think I'm just echoing what's been said on the table a hundred times, uh, putting the students first, interest of the students. Uh, and then also supporting Tim as an employee of the district. Uh, if the classroom is where you want to be, then it's our position to support you, Mike, I'm sorry, I don't know what that means for you. Uh, but, I mean, I think you can twenty-nine have to meet, and we have to meet very soon, because I also agree that whatever decision we make. I mean, convocation is next week, and kids go back to school next Monday. And we gotta have this solidified, uh, before, uh, I drop my kids off Monday morning. So.
And also let families know what's going on, and that's the other key thing, because I heard some, uh. We've been asked, you know.
Sure, and, and, and I, I don't know whether it's, it's shame on me, but I have purposely not pushed out too much information because I didn't want to generate unnecessary. Speculation, rumor, whatever it might be, I, I, I strategically wanted to wait until, uh, this meeting to have this conversation outside of, uh, the principal screening committee. I, I would, I would speak as, you know, a, a member of that search committee and, and the interview committee, uh, along with Michelle and Wes and Stevens there. I think, uh, the fact that we have a failed search, uh, is not a bad thing. I think it's a sign that we are looking out for the best interest of the students by not settling, you know, we're, and, and not that any of the kids we've, we've interviewed were terrible, they just didn't meet. What we expect as a principal in the elementary school, uh, so, you know, for, to. The public, if they're looking at saying what's going on, it's just, it's a natural movement of, of staff and employees. And we're just finding the right person, so whatever decision we make, and whatever decision you make, uh, Superintendent Richard, I know it's gonna be the best for the school, best for the kids, best for the faculty, best for the town. We expect nothing less, Saxons, expect it.
Every day.
Every day.
Every day.
Every day.
Especially next Monday.
If we were to move forward in some form, whatever, superintendent and principal position for you, would it be your intention that you be filling that role for the entire year?
I think that, um. I, I think the reality is that this stage of the game, we're not going to find anybody who's going to take on the job, and I don't know that I want necessarily somebody who's going to jump ship. On their own district at this time of the year, however, I think that sometimes a mid-year, uh, change can, can be a natural time for some, um. And so I would envision it as leaving the job, uh, posted as an interim. Because interims can come and go, there are people who, who could be retiring on their birthday and, you know, and. In September and say, you know what, and come November one, I'm ready to pick up work again, or whatever it might be. Leave that position posted, and then post it as a permanent, uh, come January, uh, and start to look for, uh, candidates who. When people are looking to switch districts, that's the time that they begin to explore those opportunities. If that's search for a permanent solution, I think that we should be, if, if, if there's a hiring season for building administrators in schools. I'd like to see us at the leading edge of that interview process, so that if we have, if there's fifty candidates in the county of people that are looking to become administrators. We have the best fifty available, or the best power management side to interview kids.
So what I'm hearing is that it would be a year long, what?
Um, maybe.
May, maybe.
It's gonna be a year. Can we, can we just agree? This is, this is how we're gonna operate for the next year, right?
Like, it could, it could very well be.
In terms of consistency, right? I would like that to kind of be understood that. We, as a committee and as a school district, we're gonna operate in sort, some form of hybrid fashion.
And what that would look like, and, as I, as I. Have lost a lot of sleep over this, but as it would, would look like, I, I moved my office.
I'm pushing this issue so we don't lose any.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Up the hill and, uh, but I would keep Brenda down here, I'd keep Brenda down here, keep the business office, uh, there. And it's, it is. You know, but, uh, you know, phone calls and Zoom and FaceTime and, and walk up or down the hill, right, doesn't, doesn't change anything, but the idea would be for me to have a. Uh, a very, well, the supermajority of my presence would be at the elementary.
Um, not to repeat a lot. But I need to just get my opinion out there, you're gonna come agreeing with the majority, so I, I do feel strongly. That first, also, thank you, Tim, so much for the, and for, for wanting to step up, and also, no one at this table is gonna respect the admin to teacher move more than me. Um, love and appreciate it, and in, in fairness to him, we should keep him in that fifth grade.
I agree.
Teaching position, and fairness to the students, community, everyone involved, I really don't feel like that, that's fair. To him at all, so I do feel strongly about keeping him in that classroom teacher role, especially if that's gonna be the plan the following year anyway, um. Greg, I'm just curious, what, what are your thoughts, because I heard your name thrown out there, how, honestly, how, how do you feel about that?
Um, I mean, it's. About what?
Obviously, it might be called the super principal. I think Greg got the hook a little, but Greg and I, Greg and I have had a lot of conversations about this, we've, we've had, we've had a lot of conversations about this, we've both. And I think we both recognize it is far from ideal, it's very difficult, um, which is, which is why I mentioned the, the fact that we had, we were, we've explored like every, every angle. To what all of us have said, which is, we want to be, I, I want to be able to give Tim what Tim wants, and that's, Tim wants to be in the classroom, how can we manage that? Like, there are, there are different, different options, is it ideal? No, is it great? No, is, is, you know, is it wearing, uh, is there? Is there burnout? Yes, is it different? Again, it's okay if I speak. By the conversation, yeah, we said, it's not like when I did. By the conversation, yeah, we said, it's not like when I did the business administrator role, which looked like, hey, eleven o'clock at night, if I wanted to. Do work, I, you know, I, that's what I did. Uh, this, this might look a lot like, and I would want the committee to know. It would look a lot like my superintendent work would be done after hours for the most part. Because being a a a a principal is full time, that is a full time job, no ands or buts about it, right? So I I would do my best to respond. I would do my best to do as much as I could during the day, but between doing evaluations. And being in classrooms and everything else on a regular basis, a lot of the sort of communication that you get from me during the day. You would probably get at night. Um.
You know.
Please be honest.
And when when Mike and I briefly talked this morning, um, you know, about. Backup Plan Three or whatever it is, with um, I I I said that the only way I could envision it working for me. Would be if for that year. Um, we somehow made the two dean of students assistant principals for the year. So that they could share with the evaluations, the observations. I don't know if the the two system, if the two deans would be willing to do that. So that would be. From my vantage point, that would be the only way it would work. If that were me being shared between two buildings, whereas if there was still an assistant principal in each building that could share that load. Um.
And we haven't had that conversation.
We have not had that conversation with the two deans.
No.
One of whom has never stepped foot in in his office yet, so.
Right, and and who.
But he does have a lot of experience.
He's got a lot of experience, but I think those of us.
Yes.
Oh, those of us who met with Lawrence last week.
We tried.
Uh. My concern with that is that he's purposely taking this step back because he uh they want administration. That doesn't mean he might not be open to it. He strikes me as a guy who'd say like, I'll be a team player and let me see what I can do to help out, but uh but having never stepped foot right in his office. I, that might be hard, so.
Um, I'm hearing that it might be a struggle for you, Greg, to envision.
Well, I think it'd be a struggle because, you know, we, this is a a principal position is a full-time job.
A hundred percent.
Even in, you you know, people say, well, it's a small school. In some ways, it's even worse in a small school, because you don't have the backup built in. So if it did go down that route, I I would say that the only way in my eyes it would work is if the deans were able to become assistant principals during that time.
So like, I I kind of have the same concerns with you taking on that role. Like, what would a distributed leadership model like? Is there a way that we could pull supports from the elementary in terms of like? I forget your official title that you have.
Um, one of the department heads.
Department heads, thank you.
And administrative licensed uh teacher.
But if you already have one, it's really easy to get the other.
It's twenty five dollars.
Oh, so.
Right, what is it?
So like, I mean, I guess, like, in like the sense of brainstorming, like, how could, how could we develop a few different sort of work structure models? That you could bring back to whatever team you needed to bring them back to, to make sure that everyone kind of feels comfortable. And now we also understand sort of the financial implications of this, right? Like, sitting through that finance committee, like. Funds down, costs are up, like, what, how do all these pieces kind of fit together? Um, and how fast can we pull that together?
So in a, in an ideal world, what I would uh love to see would be, and and I haven't spoken to anybody about this. Is just, this is the first time this is coming out of my mouth, but if if it was that model, then it would look like, hey, you'd see a cost savings. You would realize it costs savings for the year, right? I'm not, I wouldn't say to the committee, you need to pay me Tim's salary plus my salary. That's not, that's not appropriate. That's the right, that's just not real. Uh, but. There'd be some portion of a salary, whether it was me or it's Greg, whoever it is, right? Whatever this looks like. A portion of of that salary, and then I would love to see somebody who holds a license, like Amy Michelle, and she was open to it. To maybe taking a little bit of a of an elevated role within the school community. Are there things that she could do? And or are there things that like Lawrence might be willing to do to say, are there some pieces of the work? Uh, that you might be willing to do to um make it manageable for me. Financially enticing for you, give you great experience, all kinds of other things that we would try to sell them on. But that would make it so that the the workload could be distributed a little bit different. Do I have that all worked out? No.
No, I don't.
Yeah, so I guess the question is like, what's our plan to get that together, right? Like, cause what I'm hearing is that.
This is the direction that we kind of need to really sort of focus our energy in.
Right, because I don't want to put a lot of eggs in the basket of this last candidate that we're gonna try to schedule an interview.
I just wanna say, as far as the social emotional piece for students and the amount of calls and and. The incidents that we had last year, I think in both buildings, I think it's really important that we have. Two people in each building, so the assistants and the principals in each building, because quite frankly, I don't think we can do it without. The two admins, we work the dean and the principal in in both. Um, perhaps if they're on the admin's level, but it's really in the uh, it comes down to the bodies that are responding to different places, right? And going down, a person is not really feasible, I think, in either building. Um, and so that's, that's my concern. And um. So, yeah, I don't know if we get an interim rate, but you know, if having you move up there, so we still have the numbers, I think. Is a good option, but.
Do people uh apply? Maybe you know it's better than I, do people apply throughout the school year, if they can't do administrative positions at all? Like after September, or is it like a low then Jan or December, January, then it's like, so.
Good questionnaire as far as administration positions go, and I don't have a great answer for you, because it's very rare that we're looking for somebody. Uh, mid-year. I can tell you from experience, most administrative primary, unless they really hate their job. Aren't looking for, you know, in September, not opening school spring, saying like, let's, what's open? What could, where can I jump to right now? Um. But you never know. I mean, I will tell you, uh, and I said this to the screening committee, we we got, there were some candidates we did not interview. Uh, because they weren't A, they weren't certified, uh, B, they were applying from uh distances of thousands of miles. Of away, and then I think it was just, it's easy, it's very easy on Indeed, which is where one of the places that we posed it, very easy to apply for a job. That way, it doesn't require any effort. So I think you you get a lot of just.
Uh, is that the goal of school spring, to make it as hard as possible?
No, I didn't know. We want, we, our, our own application process. Our own application process is pretty, is is pretty easy, but with with Indeed, it's just somebody searches. Principal and then probably hits apply, 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 apply. They don't have to actually do anything. It requires them to do nothing except upload their resume.
The one thing I will say, and I'm gonna say it with the parts Nicole and I, I don't know what kind of a teacher you are, but having worked alongside you as a committee member, I'm assuming you this way. But I do know what kind of teacher Tim is, and it's a rarity that you have, it always happens that your best teacher's moved into administration. And that's really hard for parents and it's really hard for students. And so I think we're blessed that you're going back to science. You are an excellent science teacher. I sat in on many of your classes, and so I think it's great. And Nicole, I've heard great things about you, and so I think it's great that you dabbled in administration and said, you know what, I wanna be back for students, that's why I left. I wanna be back working with kids again. So, um, so I would like us to be able to let Tim be a science teacher and let the kids that are gonna be in his classroom enjoy his. Wacky but amazing way of.
It's only gotten wack. Cool.
All right. Yeah, again, I, you know, on my end, I wanna make sure that, you know, we're talking about moving and placement of of employees, and that's not our position. That's right, that's your job, and that's the building administrative jobs. Just providing that guidance, if it helps you figure out what to do. But I I will, I'm happy to see Tim go like fifth grade. That's not my decision, so.
So to the committee, I guess I would ask this, um. We do, we we are working on trying to schedule uh that late applicant. To see where that may take. Um. I would suggest that uh we need, we will after tonight, uh, we probably should have a Union Twenty Nine meeting regardless.
I think we need to do your evaluation.
There's for two things, one, one, you need to uh restructure and then at some point in Sep-. I was thinking in September to do my my evaluation from last uh school year. And so uh perhaps we can get in front of a Union Twenty Nine meeting and schedule it for uh next week.
That'd be great.
Uh, in the event that. I mean, but whatever direction we go, we need to have a Union Twenty Nine meeting anyway, after you've decided to make who's on Union Twenty Nine. Um, and then uh maybe we get very lucky and this individual who was applied is a, is qualified, is. Uh, excited and is supported by the screening committee and me, and we can move forward and uh plug and play and let's rock and roll. Um, absent that, uh, I will. Um, work with my team, because I think it's really important that we say, what are the best options? What could this look like? Uh. What roles, responsibilities, duties, um, it will be done by whom and when and where. Um. And will, that will, again, that will allow us, we'll pull the posting for the anticipated interim fifth grade position. I will ask Tim to to do a little bit of uh dual role working prep for the beginning of the school year, but work with us to make sure we're ready to go for. Um, or next Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so that we're ready for Monday, uh, and then hopefully have a. Some communication that that can go with the families midweek, next week about where we are.
Sounds great. Yeah. All right, if I'm if I'm, I think we're. We're moving on to principals and director. So, Tim, let's hear what's going on at the elementary school.
Got a short one for you. Summer programming ended last month. We had eighty-four students, which I think grew up about twenty or so in the previous year, which is great. Um, work is currently underway, um, the school improvement plan, which will be submitted to you uh beginning of September. At that meeting, uh, mailings will be sent to families uh the end of this week, so families, keep your eye out for some info there. Uh, and then again, we're working on filling positions, like activity board, and the only thing we need to really fill is a pair of positions. So if somebody knows of anybody who's looking to uh be our recess para or is available in that middle part of the day or thirteen hours a week, send them our way. We'd appreciate it, that's.
You may have any questions for Tim? All right, Greg, you're up.
Um, also, pretty quickly, um, I am happy to report that we are fully staffed with LMHS right now. Um, for the year, um. Parent mailing went out last week, um, so our parents hopefully by now should have received that mailing, um. About the start of school and then update will go via email, um, either end of this week, beginning of next week. Um, I just wanted to, we learned today that we have five LMHS student, well, some students, some alumni. Who were named this year to the AP honors, AP scholars list. Uh, we had three members of the senior class who graduated, Cooper Maloney. Who's named an AP scholar and Kara Johnson and Alan Nie, who were both named AP scholars with honors. And two members of last year's eleventh grade, who are now seniors. Um, Tess Olender, who was named an AP scholar, and Kelly Molina, who was named an AP scholar with honors. Um, an AP scholar had to score three or higher on three AP exams during their career. An AP scholar with honors had to score an average of at least three point two five and at least four AP exams during their. Career, so congratulations to those five students and former students. Um, we hope that, uh, I know the seniors have great plans, um, and I'm sure all of them will be doing well as they move forward. Um, so that is really it for me tonight.
Questions for Greg?
All right, Jen, so I'm the caveat of this is this moment in time, we are fully staffed. Um, we could get a new student tomorrow or, you know, things happen. Um, we have hired, I believe, eight new staff members as far as par professionals and teachers. We um, we've offered a visit uh for five, six position for special education at the elementary school. We were able to hire some of them to that spot. Um, which was huge. We've been looking for that for for quite some time. So all of those open positions that we had last year. Which I think, uh, we talked a little earlier about some other um staffing issues. Hopefully, we will be able to um. Keep everybody in these positions. We went over the PD schedule. We have a lot of PD for par professionals. And then for them to spend time also with the special education liaisons. And uh, we're gonna be working on the new IEPs this year, um, which is supposed to roll over in our system. Any moment now, um, and getting people trained. We were able to do six, uh, well, five. Half-day sessions with someone from the Collaborative for Educational Services last year. And the spent staff was able to be together for those, um, they ranged from two to three hours, and it was all about the new IEP. Um, I can bring a little bit more of. Um, a presentation about that to the committee if you guys would like in our September meeting. Uh, but really, it's the IEPs or individualized education, those are, they're becoming more child focused. And so children even at a young age are really telling us what's important to them, what are their long-term goals. And then we're trying to write these plans around that. And even last year, we started that and we've had students. Basically run their meetings that in a million years, you didn't think that they would do that, and they just became so invested and so involved. And it's a really wonderful thing to see. Um, and so that's the goal with this, is that this is really child-centered and it's focused on their family, but what what are their long-term goals? What do they want as they become, you know, middle and high school students and and beyond? Um, so we are just prepping for the PD days. We are still hiring um substitutes. I have a couple of interviews just for people who want to be sub. So perhaps we can find somebody who's interested in working on a regular basis. Um, and I'm I'm looking forward to it. I think it's gonna be some nice changes as far as the paperwork piece. Um, and really become more about the child as opposed to, do we have all the boxes checked?
Yep. Any questions for Jen?
I'm happy you're fully staffed.
Okay, and last up, we have.
I have a lot of summer updates.
All right.
Um, the paving, I'll be at the top coat on the basketball court this. So in either Friday or Monday, they'll do the curving, and then they can do the. And then maybe set the toilet clean, the rooftop soil, uh, seating, stuff like that. Then just like I said, we'll do the world map and the west map in mid-September. The HVA, each HVAC control update, CTC will finish replacing all the controls in the building within the next seven days. And they're probably moving our whole system up to the new system that the elementary school is on, and that will be done in September. Um, and over the summer, the maintenance grounds and the studio staff. Complete PM on all the HVAC, HVAC equipment, rooftop and classroom. Um, they did a lot of tree work, they removed some dying, damaged trees, and then we had a few large trees fall on the baseball fields in the. Um, we we did a lot of extra painting, mostly the elementary school. And the external stress and schedule to completely remove all the furniture, cleaning, stripping, waxing the floor of every. Um, room in both rooms. And we completed all our fire compliance and had a successful inspection in town.
Excellent.
Just one quick one on the paving.
Yes.
It goes all the way down that back.
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
And the reason for the delay, I think I communicated this year was thirty, thirty day cure time to allow the oils from the asphalt to. Remove themselves before we uh put the paint.
Buildings look phenomenal, so kudos to your staff. As a former Navy guy, I know a thing or two about waxing floors. And it's not easy. But no, the the bill, both buildings are great. I had the opportunity to be at both from now. Inside and out, they look phenomenal. I'm happy to hear uh from Michelle about the communication to staff and getting their classrooms. To get them ready for their year. Great job. Good, I'm happy.
All right. Anybody else? All right, next up, we have committee reports. First up, finance committee.
To me earlier, I was a little late, uh, but Andrea was kind enough to take over for me until I, she's the whole meeting. I did show up late. Uh, and so. The finance subcommittee uh talked about. The finance subcommittee uh talked about uh warrants, so Mr. Jester.
So we only had one warrant since our last meeting, uh the AP warrant was for fifty-nine thousand one hundred forty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. And the large vendors for that were CTC, Gateway, Regional School District, and QBE Insurance.
Sorry, my battery's dying, um I will entertain a motion for the um accounts payable. I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrant in the total of fifty-nine thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. Brendan, can you roll calls?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Keshar, yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Alright, everybody.
So our payroll warrant. Was for sixty-two thousand six hundred thirty dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I'll entertain a motion for the payroll.
I'll make a motion for the payroll warrant in the total of sixty-two thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Any discussion?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Keshar?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Sorry.
This is what it's all about.
Next up, we talked about budget transfers, again, I wasn't here for this, but Sally looked pretty well.
So we ended up with a surplus of seven thousand dollars last year. But in order to balance the the DAX that you guys have approved, uh we do need to make some transfers. Um on the left side, you can see each of the DAX and. The deficits that each had, and then on the right side, you'll see all the DAX that we're moving the money from. Um and of course, you'll see fixed charges showing three times because there was a total surplus of fifty-nine hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. So we use that up to fill as much as we can until we go on to the next dash. Um so these are all of the transfers that uh need to be performed to balance all of the DAX, the DAX budgets for FY twenty-four.
And again, if I could be, after all those transfers were made, that's that's when the. The seven thousand dollars or so round number in the black remain.
I'll entertain a motion for the budget transfer. I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfers. As presented.
A second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll calls, please?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Keshar?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. You wanna tell the whole proof about the grants that you hate in finance committee?
Sure.
Okay.
Uh so we had. There's just one other um. Piece of information that would be good for the spoken to be aware of, um so our, for FY twenty-five, our grant allocations for our title and IDEA. A grants uh came in less than they were for FY twenty-four. The three title grants uh allocation compared to our FY twenty-four allocation. There's a deficit of eighteen thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars and our two IDA grants. Uh FY twenty-five compared to FY twenty-four, there's a deficit of eight thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars. But when we budgeted for this year, we anticipated an increase in these grants, not a decrease in these grants. So uh instead of a twenty-seven and a half thousand dollar deficit, we're actually looking at a. Forty-two thousand two hundred fifty-one dollar deficit to the operating budget.
Which could also change.
Yes.
What do the, what do these grants typically cover and then what are we looking at missing out on with this loss of forty thousand dollars? What what are we not gonna have this year that we had last year?
Uh so the title, uh title grants cover uh about. What, eighty thousand dollars in uh salary? The IDEA uh Jen uses.
About two hundred and thirty. For salaries.
Right, cover paraprofessional uh salaries. So uh what it means for uh. The district this year is uh we are gonna be operating on a true street, uh and and that. Uh while we had to already make cuts to our budget, uh we are going to have to be extraordinarily careful with all expenditures. And so everything that comes across uh the principal's desks, the director's desks. Eric's desk and my desk are gonna be carefully scrutinized um. To make sure that if it's a purchase that we've explored every possible alternative at a lesser cost. Uh and to make a determination uh as to whether things are a need or a want, and is there something that we can do to some? Substitute uh the ask for something that may already exist or and to be creative about how we spend money. Uh what does that mean uh as we look forward to FY twenty-six? Is, I I think a lot is gonna depend on what happens uh in the November election uh across the nation. Uh for um or who's on what side of the aisle. Uh and and I can, I tie this back to when I went to Washington DC uh in July to meet with. Um our federal uh representatives, um it is a clear divide. Uh based on party lines, uh and so the the November election, I'm not gonna turn this into a political conversation. But it has uh it has fiscal implications for us, uh so um. We need, but we just need to be extraordinarily careful, do I think that if we have a seasonable winter, tha- that will work in our favor for sure? Uh I am going to ask. Uh staff uh to be very mindful, I know it's a challenge, for instance, the third floor in ELS. In the winter still gets warm and I see windows that are open and all all you see when that happens is you see dollars going out the window. So we're gonna have to get creative about how we manage um manage the buildings, especially around utilities. Uh we're gonna have to just be very, very cautious, lights, if they're not necessary, shut them off, uh we're gonna be um. We we're just extremely, extremely careful with how we spend money and what we buy or don't buy. Uh and it's gonna be need not want. Because again, we already made cuts to supply lines in order to meet uh our budget target uh this year.
Yes, I would argue that is the town's budget target for us and not our budget target. Um because I I said in all, I said on the meetings, uh and I mean, I'm part of the finance subcommittee, obviously, the chair. Uh I feel that our budget this year, uh that we've, that we got approved at town meeting this year, uh we cut fat from that budget that we couldn't afford to cut to begin. Um and I I, you know, so I guess my frustration here is that. We have been pushed. As the finance subcommittee of the lead school committee, it is our responsibility to develop a budget for this district, we are the ones that are here. Working with the administration, who you guys, you guys are making the budget and then we're working together with you to make it happen. Uh and I I am, I am frustrated that we have people from outside of this governing body. That are making hard financial decisions and they're forcing them upon us. And it's, and it's now, it's going to impact. Forty-two thousand dollars is a ton of money, especially when we've already cut supply lines, we've already cut, but you know. I'm very frustrated and it's not with anybody at this table. I know that the lack of grants didn't come from. The quality of grant that was presented, it was so we got awarded, we had no control of that. My frustration is not with anybody here.
We, right, those awards are not based on our.
Right, yeah, so.
Right.
I very much wanna make that very clear. But. We already cut from the budget that we could not have cut, afford to cut from. And now we're gonna do less, even more, maybe the town has forty thousand dollars somewhere in a fund that they could uh transfer to our, our district. To help us offset those.
I don't wanna say good news, cause I don't wanna couch this as a, as a positive, but because some of, some of this monies. Some of these monies are tied back to special education, should we overexpend our special education lines, we can go back to the town and ask. Uh to tap into the reserve funds that are there, so that we don't have to compromise other lines, right? So we we need to be mindful of that, but that is, that's a last resort, alright, that's not where we want to start from. But we need to remember that that is an option that we do have.
But if we're at the point where teachers don't have blackboard markers anymore because we're in March or April of the school year. And there's no money in those supply lines, we've exhausted them, I'm not saying that like the administrative team wouldn't find a way. But I would be pretty frustrated if our teachers. Have to go out there just to, just to have basic classroom necessities, just to teach our kids. In a public school. A lot of frustration of mine and I apologize, I I'm I'm sorry if I'm bending here, but this is I. Just like you losing sleep about the principal's job, I've been losing sleep for months. Over our budget. And I'm gonna continue, I'll be all the way through until next year's budget, so. Thank you for all that you guys do and and thank you and Michelle, all the teachers in both buildings, administrative team, everybody that's here, thank you guys so much for all that you do for our kids, you guys. Guys bust your ass and I I appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, up next is old business, uh subcommittee assignments. So the first one I have on my list is curriculum committee, currently it's Nicole, Craig and Kirk. Does anybody want on and or off?
I wanna stay on, please.
Not to cricket, but just to be on some. Anyone wants to be on some committee, you know what?
You don't wanna be on a committee you don't wanna be on?
Well, I take curriculum over strategic planning.
Alright.
If you wanna do curriculum and you're here, then you should do it.
Yeah.
Do you wanna do it?
Sure, I'll do curriculum, okay. Alright, next is diversity, equity and inclusion, currently it is Erin, Heidi and Kirk.
I'll stay on, I'll stay.
Alright, next is facilities. Which is Erin, Kirk and Betsy.
I'll stay on.
I think we just did that, so. We're sharing. Uh finance is me, Kirk and Craig.
I will stay unless anyone wants to take my spot.
Until the April meeting. Alright, negotiations is currently Heidi, Nicole and Betsy.
I'm gonna, as somebody, as, as somebody. Can't be on.
It's only every three years, but it's really a lie.
As somebody who, because of the conflict, can't sit on the negotiations, just, uh is it a smart move? Here must, is it a smart move to switch up our negotiation subcommittee mid-negotiation with contracts? Listen, it's only, only a couple more months of this.
Alright, policy is uh Erin. Craig and Nicole.
I'll stay. I'll stay.
I'm net about it, but I'll stay.
Alright, shared services is uh me, Heidi and Kirk.
I'll stay.
That's fine.
And for whatever it's worth, I see nothing in the foreseeable future right now.
Alright, strategic planning is uh Heidi, Craig and Betsy.
I prefer not to be because I feel like negotiations is busy this year, okay, so and I feel like strategic planning sounds like it's also going to be busy.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'll say.
So we got Betsy and Craig right now. Alright, technology is Erin, Craig and Betsy.
I'll stand. Yeah, so can I, as the sitting chair, can I just tell about committee right now? Uh I'm happy to, it was a committee that was uh originated back when. There was lots of discussion about Chromebooks and going, you know, one-to-one somewhere before that. I would like to make a motion to resolve the technology subcommittee second.
Any discussion? Roll call is Brian.
Uh Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Keshar?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yeah.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes. My first and only official act.
Alright, Union twenty-nine, uh we need three members and an alternate, I get an automatic seat.
I'll stay on Union twenty-nine.
So somebody needs to nominate, not Craig. Kirk, this is a nomination.
Nominate Kirk to be on Union twenty-nine.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Brian, can you roll calls?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Keshar?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yep.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes, please.
Alright, so we need a third main member and an alternate.
I'll say.
To be the other member.
He's a city member, she's a city member.
Yeah. Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us?
Was Mr. Robin that seconded? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Keshar?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
This, Ms. Larmen?
Yep.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Alright, now we need an alternate.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I nominate Nicole Keshar to be the alternate.
I second. Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll calls?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Keshar?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Alright, so every committee has three, but strategic.
How's the one strategic?
Thank you. Alright.
Cheryl, I'm gonna ask Brenda to coordinate at least very brief meetings for each of those committees so that we can uh identify chairs. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have new business with approval of ELS. And LMHS.
So there were no changes to the LMHS system? Oh, one, uh one, I'm sorry, one change that LMHS handbook and that was around a painting. Uh parking spots uh by students, it's coming before the school committee for a couple of reasons. Uh one is, is public property, uh and two is. We think it's good practice for there to be handbook language and. Uh potential consequences and responsibilities assigned with the possibility of allowing students to design. Something to paint on their parking spot, uh let Greg uh speak more about that, but that is the sort of the gist of the issue.
So for the past few years, I've had seniors come to me every summer, asking for best. Um a couple of our neighboring districts do allow this, um I've always kind of been able to push it off because it was. Not something that I was totally in favor of. Um but this year, um some representatives of senior class came to me with a PowerPoint presentation. Um and a whole long thing about uh that included an approval process. Um, and a whole long thing about, uh, that included an approval process by the senior class steering committee, the. Seniors, if they wanted to do this, would have to submit a design plan to the senior class steering committee. Um, the senior, the steering committee would look it over, make sure it complied with the school rules. Um, and that if the seniors who painted their spot. Um, by graduation did not overpaint it in a manner that we were happy with, the senior class would take on the cost. Of having that done, um, I was suitably impressed. Uh, with the presentation from the steering committee and since our parking lot is not in the best of conditions to begin with. Um, I'm a little, I I am comfortable with the um, proposal that the seniors put forward. Um, so I did include it in, it's really our only, uh, as Mike said, the only. Uh, proposed change to our handbook this year, other than ones that you guys have already approved about cell phones and all the other policies and stuff, so. Um, I am this year, um, because of the professionalism and detail of the proposal from the seniors. Um, in favor of this, so I do bring it forward to you, um, for your consideration.
Can I ask you a question? Cause I don't think I asked you this, do you get final approval on the design?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure.
But it goes through them first.
I like the idea, like anything that promotes school spirit and like togetherness, I love that they did a PowerPoint presentation and like. Took it that far.
Good for them.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve uh, the. So, a pro- uh, proposed change to the L M H S handbook twenty four, twenty five for the painting seat parts.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Appropriate paint, that means it's a paint designed to be on pavement, not just like eggshell. Also, are we planning on having a gallon of black, just in case we need an eraser? Alright, great.
Um, just a question on procedure. These changes don't go before policy prior to coming to the full committee?
It's not a policy.
It's not a policy.
Fair, okay, thank you.
Good question, that made sense to me, so does the answer.
Any other discussion, we are getting. This is the longest meeting we've had in a long time.
Just probably ten times longer. Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Langwa.
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yep.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
So there's been a real uptick in bike riding, which is great, uh, any day we could have at least half a dozen to maybe ten students who bring their bikes. It was a pretty core group last year, uh, and when the school council was reviewing, you know, the handbook last year in one of our meetings. We noticed that the bikes, bicycle policy really needed to be updated because the Massachusetts bike laws were updated. Uh, the old reading was anyone under twelve needed to wear a helmet, but that was up to sixteen, so what I propose is we update the wording in the handbook to. Fit with the current law, which was just passed, uh, bringing in the helmet law to sixteen and under. As well as uh, looking at rewording the part of the policy that talks about restricting students from November to April. There were plenty of days last year between November and April where it was beautiful for riding students, where it rode their bike. Wasn't really an issue, so looking to kind of change the, the wording to. Uh, you know, students are allowed to ride their bikes to school when weather allows for safe travel. So again, just updating it so it matches the current law and then removing that restriction uh, for month to month, uh, for when students can.
Make a motion to approve L E S. Uh, handbook changes twenty four, twenty five.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I have a question on the updated language. How? What is the determination of what is safe travel?
It would be determined by families, we've had students come, uh, you know, without a helmet. And we've seen that, we've contacted families and we've asked families to either bring a helmet in, which they've done, or pick the student up. Uh, if a student were to ride on a snowy day or an icy day, we would call families. So they say essentially you're not gonna be able to ride home, uh, I think we need to figure out alternative way to get.
So it becomes. An added layer of administrative contact.
I would say, yeah, yeah, and I guess we've done it before with the helmet piece and, um, we would just do the same with, with the weather issue.
I think that whoever the principal is.
A child, a child who will ride his bike on any given day, like it could be, whatever he's outside, he wants to go bike riding and. But do you agree with the law, not like as a school, we are responsible from door to door, right, so. Where's the liability, right?
We're responsible from door to door when we transport, if we don't transport, we're not responsible door to door. Okay. So that's where the, that's where the, I guess the message would be. Hey, hey, parents, you know, as the weather starts to change, right, rain, I I worry, I I personally would worry less about rain. I I'd have some concern, but I'd worry less about rain than when we start to get uh, snow or ice. Where I think that, that some reminders need to go home to parents, hey, listen, the weather is changing, please be mindful. Then if you are sending your child to school on a bicycle. You, you, you may be contacted to pick them up, but conditions become so unsafe that you're unable to. Or that we don't feel comfortable sending them home in those same conditions, I I, you know, so yes, another layer of, of. Administering, yeah, but I think it is better than. Saying, you know, from November to March, you can't ride your bike to school, because I think we've seen. With more milder winters coming, that there are more days that are available where students can, um, can ride to school safely.
And last year we did hold, uh, at least one day last year, I think, a day for pure prior as well, all the walkers and bikers for about fifteen minutes. And uh, communicated with families that we were doing that, because it was a thunderstorm, so we would do the same.
Anybody else? Alright, Brenda, can you do a roll call?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Next up we have uh, substitute rates. So the finance committee, um, we met today, we had a discussion about uh. Changing the subrates, oh, great, my stepmother, great. Um, so they're more in line with the rest of Berkshire County, so that we can actually get subs in for positions. Cause we are fully staffed right now, uh, in the spend department, that may not last. Um, sorry, but you know it's true. Um, so having um, somebody, having a more competitive rate, so those are the changes that are being made, um.
And and I apologize, these, my second row is off one, uh, I'm not sure how that happened, but they're off one column, so. Non-certified should be from ninety five to a hundred and twenty. B A should be from one ten to one thirty five, certified should be from one twenty five to one fifty. And then permanent would fill this void at one thirty five, I apologize, I'm not sure, uh. When I grabbed that, why those things moved, but they did.
And then the other discussion that we had about substitutes was, um, hiring two permanent substitutes. One for each building that would be paid one thirty five a day, and they would also get six time. All of that was approved by the finance committee.
And. Complimentary to that was the idea of instead of coming back to the committee annually, asking to revisit. That we adjust those rates by two and a half percent. Uh, until unless the committee decides that it wants to make another adjustment or or pause that or freeze that, those increases.
Make a motion to approve the proposed substitute rates, uh, as presented, uh, as well as. A two and a half percent annual increase of rates.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Does this make us competitive with other districts? It does, okay. Brenda, can you roll call us, please?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes, I also uh, motion to. Uh, the, the two, I motion to approve the two permanent substitute positions, one in the elementary school, one in the middle high school.
And I'm second.
Any discussion?
I, I, I don't know why you even said an hour and a half ago, but, um. I think my comment was, I asked it, if you haven't been to, you know, what does a day look like in our school on average, how many subs are we short? A day, and it seems like per building, per program, it's about two. So it kind of sounds like we're about five subs shorts, we were about five subs shorts. Subs short, uh, a day last year in that, you know, give or take. Uh, and so my comment was that we probably should be hiring more subs to help make sure. That we're not pulling classroom pairs. To backfill open positions, as you're aware, a classroom pair is there to service the kids with I P's in the class in, in, in the grade. Uh, and you know, that pair being pulled off that class, that grade. Uh, into, to fill another position in the school when they're needed, means that we're not, uh, complying with our I P's, those contracts that we have with families and students. Um. The super Ted has a plan. How he wants to look at that, I support the super Ted's plan, my comment purely was, if there's a need. We need to justify with that, and we need a budget for it. Hand a torpedo.
Any other discussions? Alright, Brian.
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper? Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes. Ms. Larmen, I had one more comment. I'm sorry, I don't wanna drag.
I mean, we've already been here for how long? I think we've passed the under over.
I, I didn't mention this to the, to the finance committee, but I think it would be in our best interest, I'd always mention that I would put something out to. Uh, families in, uh, in an email, a communication about this, but I think that, um, I'll also take an ad out. I think an additional advertisement in the, um, in the eagle, uh, will serve us well, I know there's a cost involved in that. But I think the more people that we can hit that are outside of Lee, uh, the better the chances we attract some additional. The school's going to, uh, substitute, uh, do. We don't get very many, uh. Fights.
Indeed, I think this is where I'm at, the majority of my harass.
I support whatever you guys wanna do to make sure that we can fully staff those subs, we're not drawing. From classrooms and from grade levels, I support you guys a hundred and ten percent.
Yep.
That it?
Yep.
But next up is meeting time discussion. So, we had a meeting in July. Um, that we had in early time, like five, so we did it at five, I think. Um, and the members that attended that meeting said, boy, this is a much better time to meet. And so, uh, we'd like to bring it back to the whole committee, or you know, might as well see if she's. Uh, but she made it to the fourth grade meeting, so. But to talk about changing the meeting time from seven o'clock to like. Four thirty or five, so we're not here until.
I would, I would suggest. Uh, sometimes our finance committee meetings are short and sometimes they are not. Either we say, hey, we start our first round of meetings at four thirty, and if we say, okay, we anticipate a short finance subcommittee meeting. Schedule that for fifteen minutes and then we start whenever, or we just start the school committees at five. And finance at four thirty, starting at four, four fifteen is kind of tough for me, like, I'm, I'm behind track until four fifteen, I can usually. I can usually. Uh, I have a little leeway, uh, but it can be difficult from time, it gives, I know it gives me. The ability to have some flexibility to get here on time.
What time is finance right now, six?
Outside of, uh. Outside of budget discussions, most of the time, those, uh.
They're fifteen minute. Oh, oh, okay, okay.
We can, so maybe it makes sense to schedule early and then if we need more time for fight, if we know that we're gonna need more time for fight, so. Okay, school committee's gonna start, uh, forty minutes later, so. Push that back a little bit, but. Be nice to the whole.
Isn't really, I mean, that's a half, and I'd say five, five thirty.
They have the meeting at five?
Five, yeah.
Yeah, oh, I think that's what we're saying, is they have to have the main meeting at five, so that we have time to do the finance committee before, so.
Is that worse than the administrative team?
It was all in favor of it.
I think for, for you guys.
I think it works well.
You guys, but you stay, so.
Well, yeah, we all stay, it's, it, it sometimes. It's a big, it's a big gap sometimes between, it doesn't mean we don't have things to do, I wanna confuse that, but. With, uh, all of us, both of us have families to get home to and and things like that, so.
Starting at five would also allow, I mean, most of our evening events in the building start at seven, right, would allow. More chance to attend those on those Tuesdays.
Oh, see, I was thinking. So, anyways, so I would entertain a motion to change the time, if anybody wants to.
I'm motion.
Would like to make a motion to change the time of our school committee meetings to five o'clock.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And that's all you need, you don't need to vote on your finance committee meetings, cause those get.
Those are, uh, is this effective then for the next one? Yeah, so our next, uh, our next thing is future business, which is our next meeting, which will be September tenth at five o'clock. Uh, next up. Yeah, next up is adjournment.
How much can we adjourn?
Second. Any discussion? Brenda will call us out.
Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper? Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
We were adjourned at eight twenty eight.